Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Village Board Committee of the Whole for October 21st, 2025. I ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Trustee Betterman?
Here.
Deanie?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Gunstein?
Here. Takes us to Town Hall. If anybody would like to address the board, please do so by stepping up to the podium and state your name and address, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to address the board tonight, or anything that's on the committee agenda? Nobody online? Nobody here? All right. That'll take us to Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Gunstein. We have two items on our agenda. The first is Item 2025-11, the Tobacco and Vape Stores. Staff is requesting a text amendment to prohibit tobacco and vape stores in B1 and P zoning districts, and designated tobacco and vape stores as a special use in B3 and B4 zoning districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the required public hearing, and recommended approval of the text amendment at their October 2nd, 2025 meeting. With that, would you like to add anything, Ms. Stone?
I will just add that the existing vape shops that we have in town will be grandfathered in. They wouldn't be allowed to expand or change operations without getting a special use permit.
Do they have to be notified in any way, or...?
We'll send out a courtesy letter just to let them know, once it's been adopted.
I want to also add, I'm sorry, I wanted to add to that, if they are in violation, they would have to reapply under the new ordinance, correct? The new text amendment? So if they got fined or lost their license, correct, they would have to come back before us, if they were shut down for any reason?
That would be more of a business license issue.
Yeah. From a zoning perspective, the one that's in B2, if they shut down for more than six months, they lose that legal nonconforming status, and they wouldn't be able to reopen. For any of the ones that are in B3 or B4, if they're going to change, or if they shut down too long, and it's going to change the nature of those operations, they'd have to go get a special use.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Alright, we'll send this on to the Village Board for a final vote. The next item is CP 2025-6. Mittman Farms, the petitioner John McHale with Bridge Street Properties, is requesting a concept plan for review for a townhouse, townhome development on 19 acres, located on the west side of South Bartlett Road between Derwood Forest Subdivision and the railroad tracks. The development would consist of 52-story townhomes and 53-story townhomes. The proposed concept plan identifies 1.6 acre private park for the development and 3.6 acres of open space, including 30-foot wide landscape buffers on the north and south sides of property. Detention would be provided on the east side of the property near South Bartlett Road. With that, would staff like to add anything?
This property is currently unincorporated, and our future land use plan identifies it as being estate residential. We have not had any interest for any sort of estate residential anywhere within the village in probably the past 15 years. Because this is not consistent with our future land use plan, we recommend that they come in for a concept plan, so that they can get feedback from the board before proceeding.
Excellent.
Would the Planning and Zoning Committee have to take a look at this also?
Yes, this would require a public hearing before planning and zoning for the rezoning upon annexation, and also a public hearing before the Village Board for the annexation itself.
Okay.
Once this is, this is a concept plan, would it come back before our committee, or would it go to the Plan Commission?
Typically, we have it come back to committee. If you want to direct staff to send it to planning and zoning for the public hearing, that's your purview.
Any other questions from the committee?
Do we want to direct it right to planning and zoning?
I mean, I think, I mean, I think that's an option.
No, I would like to see the concept plan.
Go ahead, Renee. We'll wait.
I would like to see the concept plan. I mean, isn't this the concept plan? This is being presented to us?
Yeah, this is a concept plan.
So can you see my screen?
So are the petitioners here?
Trustee Swansky, can you see the screen with the concept plan shown on it?
I can, but...
Okay.
I can, but are, are the petitioners here to present their concept to us?
Yes, they are. The petitioners are here, and they can answer any questions you may have.
So, we have had another, and I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying, trying to go back to our, some relatively recent history. We had another proposal for land here that, I believe it was on Bartlett Road, that was also zoned, it was, it was in our, was in our, in our corporate area, that were estates, and the board was not interested in changing that. So, I guess my question to the board is, do they feel that they would be interested in changing that for this piece of property?
Well, that particular property was the five acres just to the north of there, and it was a proposed senior center at that time. This is a 100-unit townhome center, in, townhomes, 100 houses, so, there's a, it's a different type of application, in my opinion, but I just wanted to make sure you could see the concept plan that's on the screen.
I can see it. I can see it fine, and I, and I, from what I can see, I, I would certainly be in favor of seeing this kind of proceed forward through planning and zoning, or building and zoning.
Okay. The petitioner's here, if you have any questions for him.
Do you have, and it may be in the packet, I'm sorry if it is, and I'm asking redundant questions. Do you have an idea of what the, the pricing for these townhomes would be?
Yes, I'm John McHale from Bridge Street Properties. I'm the petitioner and the contract purchaser for the Mittman Farms. We're estimating, we, we don't have elevations to share with the board either at this point, because we truly are at a concept level, but we would imagine that these townhomes would start in the high threes, and probably sell in the fours after options. So that would kind of be our target market right now. After we design the product and get a little further along with staff, we can tighten up those numbers, obviously.
Okay. And I think I saw there was going to be, there's, there's a park planned in here?
Yes. Yes, and that is a private HOA park. Usually, at a 1.6 acres, it's too small for the park district to look at, so that would be completely controlled and maintained by the HOA.
What other communities have you done a development like this?
We're doing a similar townhouse project right now. I'm entitling in Naperville with, in partners with MI Homes. That one is 10 acres, and we have 70 units on that, and it's a similar layout, where we have the traditional two-story townhouses backing to traditional single-family, more of like-for-like, because you get the same two-story elevation look, and the rear-loaded three-story, we call it urban townhomes, more towards the railroad tracks, more, that's where you'd want more of your density. So that's why we have it laid out like that.
We're all going to have garages, correct?
All going to have two-car garages, correct.
How about parking for visitors?
Right, good. We have some shown, and like I said, this is a concept plan, so we haven't really detailed it down, but we will, usually when I design a subdivision like this, we'll have a two-car garage, and then spaces for two cars in the driveways. I haven't dug down into your code enough to know if that counts towards parking requirements or not, but we will have additional visitor parking on-site.
Would you classify these as upscale?
Yes, yeah.
I was just going to say, why don't we let the petitioner get further along in his drawings, and bring it back to the committee, and then bring it to the Plan Commission? This way, we can see the elevations, and...
I just wanted to know...
More detail about it.
10,000-foot view, if anybody was screaming no, or had major concerns on the project, I would love to hear it now, and if not, we will move forward.
I think the layout, being the railroad tracks are right there, I think it's a decent layout, you know?
Yeah, and we tried to provide as much open space as possible. When you add the detention area in, we're almost half the site is open space, so, that's really what we're looking for.
The subdivision to the north, as they look out, as far as what you can tell from being in Bartlett for quite some time, what are those people going to be looking at? Is that 30-foot buffer, and is there enough trees, and are they going to be seeing anything, or is it going to be pretty hidden from them?
So, a lot of those properties on the south side have a lot of existing trees on their own property. So the 30-foot buffer is in addition to that. Typically, the developers try to do whatever they can to keep the utilities closer to the street, so they would probably try to maintain, we'd require tree preservation, and a plan, the tree survey, as part of their full submittal.
Is this particular parcel lower, kind of level, higher?
Along that side, it's, it's pretty level. It does have a significant drop as you get closer to Bartlett Road.
And we've already had people on-site doing the tree surveys, so we're ready for our full submittal. And we, the intention is, that north side tree buffer that's there, we're going to try to leave as much of that there as possible, obviously for the neighbors.
I mean, when you have housing like this, one of my concerns is always parking. We don't want to get into a situation where people that move in, they don't have enough parking, so that's just one of my only real concerns, so...
Yeah, we will, we will work with staff and have enough parking on-site.
Excellent. Any other questions from the committee?
I have one concern. It's just a matter of community being able to cross Bartlett Road to get to the bike path across the street. So if there's any unique solutions you have to that, I think would be good. Doesn't look like there's any sidewalks out to...
No, and staff has already identified that we do need to provide a walk on that west side of Bartlett Road, along the frontage of our property, which we would gladly do. We have a good relationship, I have a good relationship with DuPage County, D-Dot, we just finished a project in Aurora with them. I can look to see if that's something that they would entertain. Probably not at a major intersection, though, they would probably not like the idea, but we would definitely work with staff and DuPage County to try to, because that is, obviously, that's a marketing window for us also.
Well, there's, it looks like there's a sidewalk up to Chime, so if we connected there, there's, there's nothing on north of Chime to the...
Because of that five-acre piece, isn't technically part of a subdivision, so we could not require sidewalks be installed.
Okay. Because there is a light crossing at Struckman, so, I mean, community members could go through the neighborhood, I suppose. It's just a long way, so, just looking for some unique options there.
We'll work through it. Yeah, I mean, that's obviously an amenity for us, so we would love to try to work something out.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. There's no other questions? We'll wait for feedback from staff, and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all we have under Building and Zoning tonight. President Gunstein.
Chairman Hopkins. Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Thank you, President Gunstein. We have two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is the Northwest Mosquito Abatement. Staff was asked to revisit the tax levied by the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District on the Cook County portion of the village, and how the levy impacts the village's provision of mosquito abatement services generally in the village. The portion of the tax levy attributable to mosquito abatement in the Cook County portion of the village is roughly equal to $28,000 total. If the board desires staff, if the board desires, staff can try to work with the abatement district to explain our position and determine if the abatement district will agree, and if the Cook County clerk can logistically accomplish the abatement. A second option is to no longer provide mosquito abatement services, thus eliminating the cost from the levy entirely. Some communities have opted not to do the abatement, or limit activities to larvesting and not conduct spraying for adult mosquitoes. We have asked representatives from Clark Environmental to attend our meeting to discuss the merits of the various treatments for disease prevention, and I'll pass this on to Paula for further discussion.
Thank you for the summary, Trustee Laporte. We do have our guests from Clark here to talk a little bit about mosquitoes, basically the importance of it from, or abatement practices for, from a disease-fighting perspective. I will turn things over to Emily.
You could just tell me to go, and I'll, I'll do it. Super, alright, well, good evening. My name's Emily, and this is George Ballas behind me. I'm an entomologist, and I am your rep for Clark Mosquito. We have worked with Bartlett for, long before I was with, involved in designing and maintaining your mosquito abatement program, specifically on the DuPage County side. We also work with Wayne Township, who you have an IGA with, to help coordinate the efforts for mosquito control among all of the communities within Wayne Township. I'm not sure how familiar everyone here is with, with your program, so I'm just going to give you a very quick overview, and if there's any questions, feel free to stop me. I just always like to start with the science. This is an image of a mosquito's life cycle. Mosquitoes, they start as eggs. The eggs are laid in either bodies of water or areas that are prone to flooding. The mosquito larvae emerge from the eggs, and mosquitoes spend about the first three to 12 days of their life cycle in the water, and they need very stagnant, usually kind of mucky water, in order to survive there. So places like detention basins, and catch basins, and just areas where water is pooling and still are great places where you can find mosquito larvae. So after about those first three to 12 days, the mosquito turns into a pupa, and kind of like a caterpillar turns into a butterfly, the mosquito emerges as a biting, flying adult. Just a fun fact, only the female mosquitoes bite. They need a blood meal in order to produce their eggs, and the males just kind of feed on pollen. So if you're ever getting bitten by a mosquito, you automatically know that it's a female. Mosquito control can be done in only two phases of the mosquito's life cycle. The first is larval stage, and the second is the adult stage. So these are what the mosquito larvae look like, and you can see those little tubes reaching up to the surface of the water, that's how they breathe, so that's why the water has to be very stagnant. So we do a ton of larval control for your community. We also can control mosquitoes in their adult stage, and this is what most people think about when they think about mosquito control, or the sprays, right? But really, about 90% of your program, if not more, for Bartlett is based on the larval control. So how do we control them in their larval stage? We go out, we do inspections. We have approximately 120 sites that we look at. We do nine rounds of these inspections throughout the summer months, and when we find mosquito breeding, we treat it with a larvicide, and this kills the mosquitoes, or prevents them from becoming biting, flying adults. So this is really the most proactive thing you can do for mosquito control, and that's what the bulk of your program is. We also treat the catch basins throughout the whole entire, well, through the, for the DuPage side of the village, with, with tablets that last up to 180 days, and then we circle back and do booster treatments with those. We actually do those on bicycles, and they're GPS-mounted, so we can keep track of all the basins that we're hitting. Lastly, are all these bigger breeding sites that I had mentioned, so just areas that hold water, that are known to have mosquito breeding, and we treat those with larvicide, either by hand, by backpack, or with our helicopter. Another component of your program, sorry? Okay. Another component of your program is surveillance. So Clark operates light and gravid traps, and those are, those are pictured here. The light traps monitor mosquito populations, so we can find out all the different kinds of mosquitoes that are present, and we can see real-time mosquito counts. So that's your population data. We also have gravid traps, and not only does Clark have gravid traps, but the various health departments, the regional and state, also have gravid traps, and the forest preserve does as well. And the gravid traps are super important for public health, because that's what tells us when West Nile virus is present in our area. And so we pool all of our data from traps that we run, that the health departments have, and that the forest preserve and various entities have, that gets pooled every single week, and we can see where West Nile virus is present in mosquito pools. And that goes hand-in-hand with the adult mosquito control applications that are done. So think of this as a supplement to the rest of your program. And Bartlett's program has always had two goals. The first is public health, the first and foremost, and the second is quality of life, because whether we like it or not, when we have too many mosquitoes, it's really miserable to be outside, and sometimes almost impossible. And a question that we get asked a lot is, how do you make the recommendation to do an adult mosquito control application? So since it is a public health program, we are very much focused on the local presence of West Nile virus, and again, that data is pooled from Clark, from the Illinois Department of Public Health, local health departments, and the forest preserve. And then the second is this real-time data that we're getting from our light traps about mosquito populations, and almost like a weatherman or a weatherperson would forecast storms, we have a mosquito brood prediction model, that based on weather data and the mosquito's life cycle, we can predict when the broods of floodwater mosquitoes are going to hatch out, because what we never want to do is spray you knowing that in a day or two, we're going to get another brood hatch out. What we want to do is wait until that almost builds up, until the, the population peaks, and then spray and knock them all down. So, this is some of the data that we look at. So this is this summer's data of West Nile virus positive collections in the Bartlett area. So you can see that, really throughout the months of, and this is pretty typical, July, and especially in August into September, we're seeing a lot of activity. And we also look at what's going on in your neighboring communities, because mosquitoes don't really know where one community begins and the other one ends. So we're looking at all of this data, in addition to other data about what the populations are doing, and when the broods are going to be predicted to emerge. These are your application dates for 2025. So, I know I just showed you like a whole bunch of dates really quickly, and I'm showing you about, I'm showing you eight right here, and again, these are all done in coordination with the other communities in Wayne Township.
Does the West Nile virus correlate with brood size?
Actually, it doesn't. So there's two major types of mosquitoes that we look at. One is the 80s vaccines, those are the floodwater mosquitoes, and those are your nuisance mosquitoes. So those are the ones that after, maybe like about a week or so after a really big rain event, you're just going to see tons and tons of mosquitoes out, biting the heck out of you. Those actually don't spread disease. They just make it really miserable to be outside. The Culex species are the ones that carry and transmit West Nile virus, and those are actually much more discreet biters. So the tricky thing about public health and mosquito control, and really advocating for people to use repellents, is that usually when you're seeing all those floodwater mosquitoes, people are using all that stuff, but then when those kind of slow down, and the Culex are out, and the ones that are more of a threat to your health, that's when you really need to be applying your, your sprays, and being conscious of when you're outside. And a lot of times, that's when people are seeing actually more of a reduction in, in activity, if that makes sense at all. Yeah.
Can you go back, can you go back a slide or two, please, to where your...
I can, and if you want a better visual of the dates, if that's what you're looking for, I have another slide coming up.
No, I'm not looking for the dates.
It could be.
Could you go back two slides? Right there, that's the one, positive collection in Bartlett. Okay, so West Nile, so these would be species 2X, right, that, that were collected in Bartlett in, on those dates. Well, when you say positive collectors, does that mean of all the mosquitoes that you collected that fell into the 2X species, how many of them were positive?
So...
Was it just one, or was it 50, or was it 100?
These are, yeah, these are traps that are designed to catch the female Culex mosquitoes, and the traps are, are pooled, so they'll sample several mosquitoes at a time. And then, based on the, based on what the PCR data shows, it'll show if there's, if any of those mosquitoes were, were carrying West Nile virus that were sampled.
But it could just be one, correct?
It could just be one.
Okay. If we go back to, maybe you haven't hit this, maybe I should wait, and you can tell me if I should?
Let me, let me just tick ahead, this might help a little bit. This, this is data just for DuPage. So year-to-date, we had a 25% pool rate. We had 13 human cases, and statewide, we have 120 human cases right now, and six deaths, and that number will keep going up as more data becomes available. And this chart might best, I'm not sure where you're headed, but this might help answer some of your questions. The blue line shows the West Nile virus positive pool rate by week in DuPage County. So this includes Bartlett, but it also is county-wide. And you can see how, as that blue line starts to escalate, you start to see these yellow, sorry, these orange lines ticking up, those are your human cases. And then all the green lines are where we've sprayed.
I don't, oh, I see.
What we're trying to do is when we're seeing, when we're seeing the escalation, and again, we typically don't spray a whole bunch in June, because we know we've, we've got to make your applications last through September, right? But, especially with, and again, this is just your sprays and your data, but with what we see in Bartlett, we, we are spraying with both the West Nile virus positives coming up, not just in Bartlett, but also in your neighboring communities. So you're looking at what's going on in Bartlett, and then like the regional trend, and also other data as well, like the population data and stuff.
Do you have any data on Cook County? Because Cook County is really what we're looking at right now.
Yep.
Emily, do you know what, what, what kind of treatment is being done?
Cook County does, well, the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District handles the Cook County portion, so I'm not sure what qualifiers they use. I know that they do, do applications from time to time.
Did staff invite Northwest Mosquito Abatement District here tonight?
I'm sorry?
Did you invite Northwest Mosquito Abatement District here tonight? Did they decline, or...
I did not.
Well, in your professional opinion, would you, like, recommend to people to spray their yards as well, like at certain times, to combat West Nile virus?
Yeah, I mean, they certainly could. Typically, that's more of just like a comfort type of situation, where you want to be a little bit more comfortable in your yard, but it wouldn't, I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt, but really, from, from the disease perspective, the community-wide treatments are much more impactful, because these mosquitoes breed in, you know, they might be breeding in somebody's gutter, they could be breeding, you know, really anywhere, and they will move from place to place.
Do you recommend keeping the current program we have in place?
I would, especially because you have the added benefit of having it coordinated with the township, and the township does contribute towards the program, so I think that that's a real strength, that some of these township programs, along with the communities within them, have managed to work out and put together, to have everybody kind of doing the same thing at the same time.
Is Clark not licensed for Cook County services, or how does that...
No, we, we certainly could. We've actually done applications for your Cook County side before, and we could do them, you know, upon approval, or... you know, upon approval or request. I can share the cost for that, if that's helpful.
Is there, can you, can we go back to, just for a moment, on the, you don't have to change screens, the larva. I believe in our packet, it said that a lot of the Cook County, some of the communities are going to just dealing with the larva abatement.
Oh.
I believe that was in our packet. So when you're, when you're, when you're treating standing waters for the larvae, what kind of, if any, ecological damage does that do to the wetlands around that?
So the products that are used are actually specific towards certain species. And so mosquito control products are specific towards Dipterans, traditionally mosquitoes specifically. And so the treatments for larvae are there to reduce risk in a much larger area. I believe the question prior was regarding whether Cook County is going towards just only adult or only larval control. And they are both using larval control primarily, just like the DuPage County side, as well as adult mosquito control as needed on those portions as well. When you see human cases of West Nile virus, this shows people who were hospitalized, who had neuroinvasive disease. For every one case of neuroinvasive disease, there's with, there's 100 to 150 cases of non-neuroinvasive disease cases, which means that it could be something like a summer flu where you will miss two to three weeks of work, or it could be something that's debilitating for just a short period of time as well. So when we're looking at 13 cases in DuPage County, we're looking at that multiplied times 100, just in DuPage County alone.
Just to clarify, the experts say we should keep our current program. So does anyone object to keeping the current program?
What is the current cost of our current program?
Well, according to this, our Cook County contribution is 28,000. And staff was asked to revisit the tax levied by Northwest Mosquito Abatement on the Cook County portion of the village. Well, Northwest isn't here tonight. And we're talking, everything I've heard was about DuPage County. So I don't think we're getting, we understand mosquitoes are bad, but we're not getting, we're not hearing it from the horse's mouth.
We're not hearing what we're, what we asked for.
I.
So in your expert opinion, are you providing the same or similar services as Northwest Mosquito Abatement between Cook and DuPage? Are they similar or the same?
They are similar services. They are providing larval control, catch basin applications, all of those treatments. They are reviewing surveillance to determine whether mosquito control would be needed on that portion as well. Very similar in those capacities.
So our total, I just want to go back. Our total budget for mosquito abatement this fiscal year was $76,500. The portion of that that would be attributed to Cook County is 28,000 total.
So the other question we have, so we have two points to this, whether we want to change what we're doing with Clark and whether we want to send a check like the Illinois law says, correct? The Illinois law is crystal clear, right? There's no gray area. It says you shall. So when something says you shall, you shall do it, correct?
Yes, if all of those.
Could you talk about kind of the nuances of what that would look like?
Yeah.
Before it begins, so we should just send them a check and say, follow the state law. That's what we should do. We should send Northwest Mosquito Abatement District a check and say, follow the law. Let them figure it out. I don't think they're going to steal $28,000 from us. The worst that they're going to do is send the check right back to us and say, we can't do anything. I don't think we need to dig in any deeper legally. I think the state law is clear. And I think if we send them a check and say, follow the state law, they will. Or they'll send us the check back. And then we can make a determination what we want to do. That's just what I think we should do from sitting on this board for 10 years, talking about this. Because it gets old.
What are the nuances that you?
Certainly. So as Trustee Hopkins has noted, there is this law that if they're, if you're within an abatement district and the municipality also taxes for services, that there's a mechanism to eliminate that double taxation. There are several requirements that have to be met. It's, one of them is that we have to levy for those services, provide the same services. That's a little, there is some gray area there because we don't specifically have like a levy for mosquito services. We do fund mosquito services out of, you know, our corporate fund and our levy goes into that. So we have some arguments there. It's not, I, I think there is some room for interpretation on whether or not those standards could be argued about. I would say like, if we do want to pursue this option, we can issue them the check right away. I think one other option we consider is just basically reaching out to the abatement district and saying, we think these elements are met. Before we cut you a check, do you think there's any issues? If we are going to cut you the check, we need to make sure that it's actually going to be abated. So, because what happens is once we issue the check to the abatement district, they're responsible for making sure that that same amount, in our case, is going to be 28,000, that they would go to Cook County and say, okay, reduce our levy amongst all of the Bartlett, the Bartlett portion in Cook County by 28,000. It's somewhat of a complex way to do that. And I guess the last time that this was discussed, the Cook County assessor said they didn't have a clear mechanism to make that reduction because it is a unique abatement, I guess. So I think if we did want to pursue this, I would say we would, one, want to maybe reach out to the abatement district, say, hey, we think we've met these standards. And then, two, before maybe we issue the check, make sure that the Cook County can actually abate the taxes. Because I guess the concern would be, we issue the check, they sit on it, nothing happens, and then the taxes aren't abated. And now we're trying to go back and say, well, send us our check back, things like that. I just think we can reach out to the abatement district if the board wants to pursue that and see if, how it can work.
I definitely don't mind a phone call. Lately, legal battles back and forth and racking up hours and hours and hours of legal bills over something that should have been followed for the last 25 years? I don't know. That's my problem.
I think it's worth exploring to find out if there is a mechanism. This has been something the Trustee Hopkins has brought up for numerous years, I know. But the last thing you want to do is just send a check and then it goes nowhere. The point of sending the check is to get a reduction on the Cook County, to the Cook County assessor, to make those changes to the tax bill.
Historically, Cook County tax bills have never gone down. So I want to make sure that that is something that is, before we send a check, that is done and T's crossed, I's dotted, so that check doesn't just go away and go in la la land.
Just curious, how much would this be worth to a resident?
Well, if you take Cook County side residential.
A homeowner would see a reduction of seven or eight dollars on their bill.
What about like the streets of Bartlett? What would he see a reduction in?
Seven or eight dollars?
Streets of Bartlett, like a.
Commercial business.
Commercial business, like, like the streets of Bartlett.
I just, I just did a homeowner.
I have, I have another quick question because I felt like we didn't have tons of rain this year and that mosquitoes were bad like all summer. So I don't know if there was just something different. So I guess that's my question. And then number two, are we like on a top tier plan or is there something else that we can like kill more of these things? If like there was, is there like a next level where we can like, I mean, I couldn't even sit outside. I think all of us kind of felt like going to any festival this summer was awful. I don't know if something was different.
I feel like a little bit, this was a little bit like the never ending summer with the mosquitoes because it got a little bit cold in, in September and they kind of died down and then they came right back, like seemed like twofold almost. But yeah, in terms of like stuff in your, in your yard and things like that, like there's sprays that you can put on your vegetation.
Like are we at like the top, like, or that's just, that's the service? So there's not like more?
I mean, we could do, we could do more adult control or if there's areas that you have any concerns with, we do have an 800 number and a portal. So if you think like, hey, I'm experiencing something crazy and maybe there's some standing water like running somewhere behind my home or maybe my neighbor's got a pool that hasn't been open, it's all part of your program. We'll come out and we'll take a look. And yeah, and we'll treat it if we can. And normally what we do too is if we find pockets where we're getting a lot of complaints, we'll see if, if there's any, you know, if it's, if it's more than like a house or two, maybe there's something else going on, maybe there's some tree line that we need to have added on to do some extra application there with like an ATV or something like that. So, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was just asking because I, just from me being outside this summer, I felt like I instantly said, well, this doesn't work.
Yeah. And if you were out too, like in parks and things like that, we do do work with a lot of different park districts. So, you know, I can certainly reach out to yours and see if, you know, if there's, for different events or if the village is having events, I know every now and then we'll, we'll treat one, like we'll do your Fourth of July application. So we can do like localized applications too, even though we can also do, you know, the village wide ones.
So can you scroll to the slide where the financial part kicks in for the village of Bartlett?
So I have, I put just on this slide deck, what it would cost to include the Cook County portion in with your adult control applications. But if there's other, did you have?
My question is treating the larva cost versus the truck that drives around smoke bombing the neighborhood, I'll call it, right? I've lived in my neighborhood for two years and I have a camera and I have not seen a Clark truck ever go through my neighborhood.
Okay.
So my question is, are we already set up where all of our resources are treating the larva and the standing water? Or is there a, what we currently are signed up for, is it a split?
No, more of the resources are going towards larval control and surveillance.
Because I don't, I personally also don't see a reason to treat via the street because I don't, I just don't see the advantage of it. If we are going to spend the money, I would rather spend the money treating the larva more aggressively before they hatch.
Right.
But I'm just trying to figure out what the financial difference is between treating the larva or what our contract is treating the larva versus spraying adult.
Yeah. I can, I can.
Well, Kelly?
Oh, sorry.
I can expand on, I have a question that she might be able to answer in relation to that. I don't know what chemicals you're spraying, but there was a time, some of us are old enough to remember, when DDT was sprayed and mosquitoes developed an immunity to that. So what are you spraying? And are the mosquitoes developing an immunity to it?
So, so we're spraying a product called Biomist. It's a synthetic pyrethroid. And right now, where we are, we are not seeing a resistance to it. But we do have other products available if we need to do different kinds of, you know, applications where we're alternating products as well. So right now we are seeing a reduction in mosquito counts following applications. And then to your question, I can, I can provide you with the, with an exact number, but.
How many trips they take through town and what arteries they take? Are they going through residential neighborhoods? Is that part of our plan that we currently have with your company?
It is, yeah. All of.
How often is that per year?
All of the public bridleways and roads are covered. We do eight applications per season typically. And if you, if you do ever, like, one thing that, that sometimes is missed is that, like the reason people don't see us is because we come between dusk and dawn when the adult mosquitoes are most active. So we might be out at like 2:00 in the morning. And also we use mostly electric equipment at this point, so it's very quiet. But we do have everything, we do have everything GPS'd so that we can provide you with like timestamps of when we were in any given area. So if you wanted to share like your block with me, I could tell you when we were on your block each summer.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out if the money that we're spending for Clark would be better served treating more aggressively our basins and the larva versus having the truck drive around. And then maybe for special events like our Fourth of July, because how long after you drive a truck down a street, does that yard or front yard or backyard stay mosquito free or reduce the amount of mosquitoes?
We typically will see a reduction for about a week after we spray, although at certain times of the year, we might go like one week after, like week to week, length the weeks together, depending on what, what our data is showing. But yeah, we'll normally see a reduction for about a week. And the one thing that we really like to emphasize is this is a more of a disease program than a comfort program. So if you are looking to like really be comfortable in your yard or even on your street, you, especially in Bartlett, you guys have a lot of forested areas. So depending on where you are, you, you definitely might need more than that to be outside and be comfortable. But the, the village and the township, it's, it's not a comfort program. It's more of a public health program. So the goal of that is to knock down the, the female adult Culex mosquito specifically when, when disease is present. Because every time that female lays eggs, all of her eggs now, all of her offspring now also can carry and transmit, will carry and transmit West Nile virus. So it's kind of like a supplement to the larval control, if that.
Trustee, Trustee LaPorte?
Yeah, we have to get back on topic. If the board desires, staff can try to work with the abatement district to explain our position and determine if the abatement district will agree and if Cook County clerk can logistically accomplish the abatement. That's number one. Number two, a second option is to no longer provide mosquito abatement services, thus eliminating the cost from the levy entirely. This is what we're discussing right now. So we're, we're off topic here and we're not talking to the right people.
Trustee Hopkins?
Thank you.
We did a little quick math at the staff table. So Senior Flexonics would pay about $778 for mosquito abatement and Devon in Prospect
All right, so that's.
So Adam, Adam, this has been an issue for many years. This is, why are we discussing this tonight? Are we trying to save 28,000 or is the Northwest, is Cook County not doing something? I'm not clear. Why are we discussing this to begin with? It's not about mosquitoes, it's not about people, it's about money, right? So we're either going to pay the 28,000 or we're not going to pay the 28,000.
I think you're right, Trustee LaPorte.
It's about money?
Not people.
Yeah, I have never had a problem with Clark, ever, and them doing their job that we've hired them to do. I think they do a, a great job. I think Trustee Ganzie differs with that point maybe because she said it was a bad year. I don't know, with mosquitoes. But.
All right. So with that said, let's let Kurt make the phone call that we talked about to see if the mechanism is there.
All right, two things, just a couple of things. One thing I think it's important that maybe in our packet, we could have got the actual Illinois law that outlines this. That would have been helpful. And I forgot what my other point was, but I mean, if Northwest Mosquito Abatement says, no, we don't want to do any more work, then I think we just need to make a call to the Illinois Attorney General and say, hey, there's a law on the books here, they don't want to follow it. And let them take care of it. I mean, I don't know why we have to be the ones to be forking out all this legal money when there's people out there that do that. Someone else doesn't want to follow the law? It's not our job to force them to do that. So I think there's other mechanisms that we can get involved and other people we can get involved to get them to follow the law.
Okay. First off, I want to thank Clark for your presentation. I know more about mosquitoes right now than I've ever thought I've known in my entire life. I, I would like to circle back on what you guys have said and I'd like you to get more information to staff so that we can have a more depth conversation.
so that we can have a more depth conversation about treating more of the larva. I'd like to know more about what the Park District and the Village Bartlett does because it's useless for us to do one point if they're not holding up their end as well. So that's totally separate from the Cook County levy portion that Trustee Hopkins has brought up for the last 10 years. At this point, to Joe LaPorte's, Trustee LaPorte's point, it's about money, therefore let's let Kurt and staff get with Northwest, Mosquito Abatement District, yeah. Find out if the mechanism that hasn't been there prior is now in place. If it is, we will have another discussion about it and let's see where they're at. Okay?
And we can certainly provide you the statute.
That way we can put this to bed. By the time you have that information, we'll have made a decision of what we're going to do going into our next budget season. Does that sound, is that good?
I would just like to add though, like, I know we're talking about the money, but that we do care about not having West Nile virus in our community.
Right.
Care about the people.
You know, it is annoying to be at events in Bartlett and it's filled with mosquitoes. Okay, it's, it is a nuisance. So it is a nuisance treatment, rather, a comfort treatment in addition to the safety part of it, so.
Right, and, and the agenda item is not that we don't want mosquito abatement, it's a policy item. So we're discussing a policy item, it's not that we don't want mosquito abatement. So let's have Kurt make the phone call, have staff do their research and we can move on to the next item.
Correct. And then we will reconvene with how we engage Clark going forward with further discussion after we get more of the data that we want from other areas within our town. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
But next time I should totally bring the jar.
Of mosquitoes? So thank you again for your presentation and coming in tonight. Again, I think we all learned more about mosquitoes than we ever thought we would, so thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So, Ed, I am out, I'm gonna send a jar down. What was the number? This has been, I, I can't sleep at night.
Oh my God.
I'll have to look at the exact number, it was around 734, I believe, was what the number was. But I can send that to staff to make sure that you guys have exactly how many there were. So we brought a jar of larva so that people could try to figure out how many mosquito larva were in the jar.
It's gross.
Great, very good, thank you. If there's no other questions, thank you to Clark for coming in tonight. Thank you for, for staff. Kurt, go ahead and move forward with what we discussed. And if everybody's ready, we'll move on to the next item.
We are ready.
Okay, so the next agenda item is the proposed 2025 property tax levy. The proposed 2025 property tax levy was presented and discussed at the October 7th committee meeting. Following the meeting, Mayor Gunstein voiced his concerns. The proposed levy that was presented is not keeping pace with inflation, which is currently around 2.92%. This item is back to committee to discuss two options. Option number one is what was presented at the 10/07 committee meeting with a total levy amount of $12,882,559. This was a 0.09% increase from the 2024 levy and a 1.44% decrease from the 2024 extension. Option two, keeps the general corporate and debt service levies the same as option one, but increases the police pension levy by $471,870. The total levy for this option is $13,354,429, which is the 3.76% increase from the 2024 levy and a 2.17% increase to the 2024 extension. This item will go before the 11/4, November 4th board meeting to establish the estimated 2025 property tax levy. And I'll hand it over to Matt or Paula to discuss.
Thank you, Trustee LaPorte. So yeah, I think you laid it out pretty well there. After the last committee meeting, Mayor Gunstein mentioned he was concerned that the proposed levy that was presented wasn't keeping up with inflation. So we decided to add another option for the board to look at. And as he mentioned, option one was what I presented at the last committee meeting, pretty much keeping the levy flat from the prior year. The only increase was 12,000 for the debt service levy. It was a 1.44% decrease from last year's extension. This option did use, would use 943,740 of general funds to supplement the police pension levy. And I did do a little research. I think this option would keep the taxpayers' Bartlett portion of the bill flat or even it would go down a little bit due to new construction that would be added to the tax rolls. Option two, we're keeping the general corporate and debt service levies the same as option one. The only change where, is we're increasing the police pension levy by the $471,870. Again, this is a 3.76% increase from last year's levy. It's a 2.17% increase from last year's extension. So this option does kind of line up a little better with the rate of inflation. This option would cut down on the amount of general fund that we would need to use to supplement the police pension levy. So we would use $471,870 of general fund. And for this option, so for a home that's valued around 400,000, I would estimate, you know, the taxpayers' Bartlett portion to go up about 25 to 30 dollars.
That is the Bartlett portion for the Village of Bartlett only?
Correct.
It doesn't make, that doesn't count for any of the other taxing bodies who have already increased their levies. So.
But the majority of that would be to cover the police pensions.
Right, so the, the point that I was trying to make is we can't keep borrowing ourselves and keep taking money from our general fund to keep up with inflation. Because if we stayed zero this year and next year, let's just say we stayed zero, we are consistently taking money out of our general fund to make up that difference. So in three years from now, Matt's gonna, our treasurer's gonna come to us either borrowing $3 million out of our general fund instead of a million this year, or he's gonna ask us to raise the levy 6%, 7%, 8%, which we did after a nine-year hiatus of raising the levy. We had to raise the levy in 2023, 22, no, 23, like 9%. So after I did the math, this keeps us on pace with inflation. The cost of labor, the cost of goods, the cost of materials to maintain the village is not going down, it's going up. This particular portion is for the pensions. I don't think it is in the village's best interest to consistently use the reserves in our general fund to keep up with that. At some point, we will be in a bad situation. We have to be fiscally responsible and the pensions are a real thing and we have to consistently stay on top of that. Otherwise, what's going to happen is as we start needing infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, assistance with our TIF, we are not gonna have the money in our general fund to keep up with that. So this just puts our levy on pace with inflation, thereabout, correct? What's, what's the current inflation rate?
2.92%.
So if we raise this 3.75% this year, we used 400,000 of our general fund. And next year, we did another 3%, right? With the added homes, we should be sitting in a position where we're not borrowing out of our general fund next year at all. So we are being fiscally responsible by keeping it under the 5% cap. Well, it's not cap, it's the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. And we can still have the hearing.
Yeah.
But the point is, I think it is in our best interest to be fiscally responsible and keep up with inflation, so.
So what happens with the general fund then if the money's in there? Like what's our?
The general fund to run and maintain all of our roads and streets and everything, so.
Well, don't we, we have money in, in our public works funding for that, don't we?
You're shaking your head at me. Renee is asking how we fund, you know, public works projects and, you know, beyond the general fund. Or maybe what comes out of the general?
Hold on, I, I want to interject in there real quick. We raised our home rule sales tax to 1.75 to start-
Yes, we did.
To start establishing more money in our general fund for streets, roads, long-term projects to maintain our aging infrastructure. This particular-
That's-
That is correct, you're right.
Yes, I agree, yes.
This, this raise covers half of just the pension. If we take the full million dollars, it is strictly covering just the pension and it takes away a million dollars from our infrastructure plan.
Just remember, we don't have a budget for our stormwater, so that is coming out of the general fund as well.
Correct.
So the home rule tax and the motor fuel tax-
So I'm sorry, go back to Stephanie's question. Trustee Ganzie had the question and I kind of interrupted her, so we can go back to her. What was, what is this money for then?
So he, I think-
This is specifically for the police pension levy. But the offset that we're talking about comes from the general fund.
And what's our minimum we have to keep in there?
The general fund? 25% of our operating expenditures. So that, I mean, I think roughly that's about 14 million.
And what do we have in there?
Right now, we have about 24 million.
And that overage is for our long-term infrastructure plans, correct?
Yeah, so I mean, if you remember, I went over our five-year projections last budget season. So that included a lot of bigger proj, you know, stormwater projects like the Country Creek, I think was $9 million. So my five-year projections were showing us going below our minimum amount, which again is why we did the, the home rule sales tax increase.
But if you-
So if we take the money out of the general fund to cover the police pensions, we're gonna be even lighter on what we need to fix infrastructure down the road, even with the home rule tax and the motor fuel tax.
That is correct.
Well, have you, have you figured in the fact that you told us earlier today that the tax income, the income tax was up? And that that's-
A lot of our revenues are doing great. Income tax is doing great, sales tax is doing great. I thi, I think the point is, you know, the future is unknown, so in my opinion, it's always best to be prepared and, and this would help us do that.
It would, of course it would. Well, I've said in several meetings over the last year where there were different proposals for economic development and I was told, as all of the board members were told, that none of the projections, that none of the projects we were talking about would necessitate incurring a tax increase and that we had sufficient funds in the general fund to cover these projects.
At the time, I mean, at this time, we do. I wouldn't have proposed option number one if it wasn't viable. So I think this is more of a, a board decision on which-
This, and this is-
You want to go?
This raise is strictly for the pension fund, correct? Right? This levy.
This is specifically for the pension fund, yes.
So do we need a projection showing inflation increases the next three or four years and how those would cover the police pensions versus if we were to just take money out of the general fund? I mean, obviously, if we're gonna just take money out of the general fund, we're not gonna have enough over the next five or 10 years.
I didn't, I didn't hear the whole question, I'm sorry, Joe. Can you speak a little louder?
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine whether if we do inflation increases over the next five years, does that get us ahead of the game versus taking the money out of the general fund over the next five years?
Yeah, I think if we increase our levy for inflation, I think that definitely would put us in a better position going forward.
And if we're stuck with additional funds at the end of all that, that stays in the general fund and we can apply it accordingly to other projects?
Correct, yeah. Any surplus we have in the general fund per our policy would go to our, our municipal building fund for our future building projects, which the municipal building fund right now has a balance of around 4 million.
Which like, what would that be?
Say that again?
What would a municipal building project be like? Something to repair here or what?
Yeah, any, you know, lift station projects.
The HVAC AC work that we did here, the new roof for, that we put on a couple of years ago.
And the village hall was built-
Anytime we build a municipal building, village hall.
So if I went back and listened to all of our prior, for, you know, my whole five years on the board, audios from these meetings, wouldn't I hear exactly the same conversations? That if we raise taxes, we'll be better, we'll be better suited to handle capital projects? And if we, if we increase the general fund, we'll be better to handle capital projects? And, and every year, it's the same thing? If I go back, am I, am I going to hear the same conversations?
Renee, I missed the last half of what you said, if, after capital projects.
If I go, if I go back and, and listen to past, like, the five years that I've been on the board, our past meetings about this, our past discussions, is, is it, it's always, am I going to hear the same thing? That yes, if we increase taxes, will that suit us? Will that put us in a better position for the future? Yes. Well, if we increase or maintain or increase our general fund, will that put us in a better position for the future? Yes. I, I'd like to know if I'm ever gonna hear a, a conversation that says, hey, we're pretty well positioned because of something we did three years ago. Because of a decision we made three years ago.
I think those conversations that we've been having about capital projects and what we're seeing is the, the, the point here is the age of our infrastructure. If we were having this conversations 15 years ago, we would be in a better position because our infrastructure's not reaching the age where we're seeing the kind of failures that we are or in the replacements that we are. That's why we're having these discussions now. You know, for the past several years, we have held our portion, our 10% portion, our 9% portion of the tax bill steady. So we have done that. I think the discussion that we're, we're talking about the last couple of years has been about what are we doing to make sure that if we do have, you know, the majority of our town, which was built in the 90s, all of that infrastructure is now coming to the point where it's reaching its, you know, declining years. I think that's the difference between those conversations.
So I guess here's my question. If we said, let's just raise the levy 10% this year, in three years, we'll be having the same conversation?
When we talk about funding for capital projects, we, we talk about having generational equity, right? So you don't want, think about the, the, the street and the sewer in front of your house. You live in that house for a certain amount of years and, but you're probably not gonna be there for the entire lifespan of that utility or that street. So you should pay a portion of that for the maintenance and for the keeping of it. But to put the whole burden on you at one time isn't really fair because there's gonna be future people that live in that house and they, you know, through their taxes, will pay for the maintenance of that street and that utility. It, that leveling out and that evening out of, of the costs over the lifespan of those utilities is really why we look at smaller increments. So to say, well, gee, everything is, everything's getting old, we should raise the, you know, levy by, you know, 12% and everything will be great. Yeah, but that's really not taking in consideration the, the future of people coming in. Yeah, but that's really not taking into consideration the, the future of people coming in and the people who, you know, why have that, all that impact in, at one time? The other-
I just, I also don't understand how we get from a negative 1.4% percentage change to a 2.17. That just seems like kind of a, that's, that's, you know, we've been fairly good about incrementally being like 1%, 1.5% and my math says that this is 1.2.75, almost 3%. When we were told repeatedly that there was plenty of money in the general fund to source what we needed and that we were not going to need a tax bumping. But you guys, if that's what everybody wants to talk about, that's fine.
I just-
I would just say that the, the first option does that. You were not lied to at all. You know, the first option does that, it does provide that. That's not the problem. The, what the mayor is talking about, he's talking about pension debt. And pension debt is going to keep increasing, it's not going to go away, and we have an obligation to fund it by, you know, 90% in 2040. And we're on track to do that. You know, the, the point is, it's a policy decision, but I just want to be really clear that option one that was presented to you was what we had said all along.
Option-
Thank you.
Option one was using a million dollars out of the general fund. That was the basis for my concern to take the money from the general fund that would be used and was gained by our sales tax increase that was brought in to maintain our streets and our infrastructure. I also want to point out to Renee's point that she brought up earlier that the cost of development money was a loan to the TIF. So that is, that does come back, the, the purchase of the land.
Of 651 West Lake, yes.
651 West Lake is a loan out of the general fund and is not, it will come back to the general fund. So this was strictly to keep pace with inflation and maintain what the goal was to, which we talked about last year, was to, trustee Laporte's point, build up a program so that our infrastructure can be maintained in a way that it's phased and not putting us in a negative cash position or a negative financial situation. So that's why that sales tax went into effect. This conversation was strictly because I thought it was, I think it's the wrong decision to use 950-something thousand dollars out of the general fund to cover the pensions when we have purposely planned for the money that's in our general fund to go towards our infrastructure, our water, roads, sidewalks, streetscape, whatever you want to call it. That's the reason that I asked Matt to run the numbers utilizing the current inflation standard rate, the rate that's-
Okay. It sounds like Matt is, you're, that you're in favor of this from your-
Of option two.
Of option two. It sounds like something that, that would be your recommendation to our board.
Yeah, I, I agree with what the mayor is, is saying. I haven't studied other municipalities' levies, but I think it is common practice to increase the levy by the rate of inflation or around that amount every, every year.
Because I think if you look at the chart that was in your packet last time about how we funded the levy, we only started taking a reduction from the-
General fund?
General fund, thank you.
Years ago?
About the last three years.
Yeah.
But those years previously, we levied the full amount. That was from our actuary.
So it sounds like this, it's safety net for the future. My, I guess my understanding of it or what I would want to see just as a resident, so if I see my taxes going up, we're talking about these projects that we do have to have like a good process and plan all the time going forward so people feel the value, not like it went up and now we're talking about something else that's going wrong, right?
Well, I'll even spell it out a little differently. We got 10, roughly 10 million over the cap. Is that what you said?
Correct.
9 million of it-
Over the minimum, yeah.
Over the minimum. 9 million of it is for Country Creek, right?
Correct.
And then a lift station will cost us, Dan, million, two? I'm assuming, let's just assume there's a catastrophic, right?
Well, the lift station would come out of the sewer fund. But there are, Munger Road, Box Culver is a perfect example. We had a failure of a Culver pipe. We have Newport, we have several corrugated metal pipes that are in the-
Put, put a number on it for a round figure.
Just say a million bucks.
Okay, so that's 10 million in two projects right there. So that brings us right back down. Now take the million from the borrowed fund, now we're under where we should be, correct? And there's no plan or money for infrastructure repair beyond that because now we are, we have used our reserves.
Yeah, we don't-
So then I have, I have, I have a question. Why was option one even presented?
It's a policy decision, Renee, and the policymakers are thinking they want to be safe and from the police pension, not out of the general fund, but from the rate of inflation. That's why. So.
No, no. Option one took, took the policy pension out of the general fund.
Correct.
Option one was 0.09 increase. Option two is 3.74. Or 3.0, I can't see it.
So if option one wasn't physically responsible, if option one wasn't physically, physically responsible, why was it presented to us?
I don't think that's a fair statement. Option one is fiscally responsible. It has been following our past practice for the last three years to take money from the general fund and make a recommendation after we get the actuarial report about police pensions, looking at that number and, and saying, how are we going to fill the gap? Are we going to fill the gap from the general fund? Are we going to fill the gap from, from the levy? The past three years, this board's policy has been to pay it from a portion, you know, a reasonable levy amount and from the general fund. And after the last presentation, we were asked to look at it again.
Okay. I don't think that the last couple of years we've done this. We haven't, just my recollection, maybe I am incorrect, but my understand, my recollection is we haven't taken a whole million dollars from the general fund. We've taken like 450, a half a million. We haven't taken a whole million.
750,000 last year.
Last year was around 700,000. The two years prior, I think it was around 380,000.
Okay.
For pensions.
For pensions.
For pensions.
So this cuts the nine, this cuts the pension, the 900, let's call it a million dollars, it cuts it in half roughly. We're still taking out of the general fund, but we're reducing the amount we're taking out of the general fund. We are bringing that income in through the levy increase of, through an inflation increase. And the goal would be to evaluate this next levy season to see if inflation rate at, let's just say it's 2% next year, do we still need money out of our general fund in 2027? That's, the goal would be to not have to continue to borrow out of the general fund to cover pensions. Does that, I mean, I'm, again, it's my position, it's my thought process that the pension is not going away. It's going to be continual. And it's going to continue to rise. It's going to continue to rise and it's going to continue to dip more and more and more. It's a million this year, it could potentially, if we did this again at 0.09 or 0.09, whatever it is, we could be at a million and a half to 2 million out of the general fund as our infrastructure continues to age or Dan presents us with something that needs to be fixed or we need a roof on village hall or the golf course, whatever it is. I'm just using that as an example. So that stuff continues to age and continues to need maintenance. I think this is preparing us for a worst-case scenario. Would you agree? And, and being prepared to maintain that. So we, we don't have to cut a service to put in new water mains. I'm ju, I'm using this as an example because, you know, I saw a water main break today, so. I think that was a happy medium was the 50, or 3.75. And we ran it multiple different ways, but these were the two options. But again, option one was presented with the same policy that has been the last three years. So.
I think it's also better, it's also better to do it in little increments over a few years as opposed to one large lump sum down the road. If you live in a condo and they assess your, you know, you need a new air conditioner and all the people in the condo have to chip in 40 grand, it's, it's kind of a shock. But if you're planning for that over the years and it's only two and a half, three years, 3.5% over five years, it's less of a bite.
So the change in the levy amount affects not only residential, but also commercial and industrial also. It raises them probably a lot more than a residential house. So this raising it incrementally like this is pretty responsible for if you're a resident actually.
Yeah, I can tell you, I ran one of our larger businesses in town. Their total tax bill is around 300,000. This would, option two would increase it by about 2,300 dollars.
I, I see the value of being in Bartlett for 40 dollars a month. Is that Joe's?
Well, and that, Dan, that's a good point. We offer a nice product and we've been keeping people, including myself. I've been here my whole life and we've paid nominal taxes to live here. And other taxing districts, maybe the school district, they don't have a problem going to the full 5% and they get it. And we're, we're not doing this to build a cathedral, we're doing this to cover our police pensions.
All right, Joe.
Okay, if there's no further questions, if, if there's no further questions, we'll move this, we'll have the board, we'll have staff bring this to us for a future vote.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say to staff, thank you for your work. I'm not trying to- I'm not trying to be negative towards you, I'm just posing questions, okay? That I know are going to come up from my neighbors, okay? So, but I do appreciate all the work that you've done.
And I don't mean to be, you know, particularly defensive, but I didn't want to give the impression that we were just making stuff up. And I know that's not what you meant.
On a, on a $400,000 house, if, if Matt, if I heard him correctly, he said it's 40 dollars, that's 3 dollars and what, 25 cents a month to live in Bartlett? I'd gladly pay 3.25 for the services I get.
Well, all I can say is I'm glad we don't have to hurl anyone or-
All right. We don't need to get in a situation like Harvey Scott. I also want to thank Matt. I ran you through the ringer on the numbers and I appreciate the hard work that you and Paula put into this because, believe me, it's never easy to add a tax increase, okay? It's not. I personally don't like it, but I also understand how it need, how a business runs. And this, unfortunately, it's a business and you have to plan out for long-term expenditures. And I know that every trustee up here has projects and certain things that they want to get accomplished, whether it be sidewalks or whatever. And I'm not about to cut our police department and our public works department to make that happen. I think we are setting ourselves up for success rather than sacrifice. So, and it doesn't bear any decision or change in our TIF or our development because that is borrowed from our general fund and will be paid back. So.
So the next step is our public hearing and the proposed tax levy. So I am going to assume that we are writing that public hearing script for option two?
Do we want to take a straw vote? I think we go with that. I mean, I, at this point in time, I think we've all, we've all addressed the concerns and the questions and I think everybody got their questions answered and there's time to follow up on it in the, in the coming days if you have more questions. So with that said, Joe, we'll move this to the board.
Yes, yep. Paula, to answer your question, I think yes. And there's no additional items on my agenda.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Thank you guys both for remoting in. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Baderman. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Baderman?
So we can end this night?
Baderman, Dany?
No, I want to stay here a little while.
Proxy vote.
Gansy?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte? Swansky?
Yes.
You got the original, sir. Laporte said, or Renee said, is that it? We are adjourned.
Yes.